This is a man who prefers to press like a lady. The kids will be like, what the?
If you present these things, it's not a big deal. Kids will not take them as a big deal. They won't react like I would react to them. It's all your fault.
That's how we were raised.
Yeah, well, you know, it's not, there's just a whole different.
It is.
Very long time ago.
And what was your special?
Yeah, just a few.
It's a work in progress.
Not like, oh, that guy with that back in the hole when you were a kid.
They would never come out with no, and that's sort of a sad point. I mean, there were people that did that. That was their entertainment, that was their profession. And you knew that.
Yeah, right.
You knew the names, you knew the people.
Yeah. Well, it was a lot more people than you realize.
Yeah.
In their home, dressed up like that. Like they were ready for you.
I do remember trying on my mom's high heels when I was about four years old.
Did you fall over?
I thought, how does anybody walk in?
Yeah, right. He's crazy. I still wonder how does anybody walk in.
Guys, ready?
We're ready, we're waiting on you.
Okay. Okay, welcome everyone. We'll call a meeting that order. We can get done tonight. First is approval of the two thousand twenty Fireman's Service Award point listings. The fire company has furnished us, they applied us with the names of everyone. It's really something that we've drawn good faith, hoping that they have done their work. Are there any questions on this?
I didn't see anything.
What's that?
I didn't see anything online, but.
This is the same thing we had on, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they've narrowed this down. Which is sort of nice.
So I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty Fireman's Service Award listing as supplied to us.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, in conjunction with that, everyone, I'm passing the sheet around. Everyone needs to sign it, please. And then we give it back to, thank you.
Who's that go to?
Because. Oh, back to Jeff.
Oh.
And then I guess he sends it off.
Okay, next, approve renewal of service and maintenance contract with Managed Technologies. Random, or do you have any insight on this, any costs?
Costs, they're saying according to Jeff.
No increase in cost. No increase in.
Everyone happy with that?
Yes, yes.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll make a motion to approve renewal of the service and maintenance contract with Managed Technologies.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know if I signed this, because you probably said this is the original. So I guess I'll sign this.
Excellent. Appreciate it, thanks, thank you.
Okay, moving along. Approve hiring of temp crossing guard. Monique, I think I believe she's changed. I think she changed her name to Monique. Or said that's how you pronounce it. Whichever. End sign for twelve dollars fifty cents an hour. Retro to January twenty first. I'll make a motion to approve the hiring.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution zero twenty two thousand twenty rejecting bids for replacement of firehouse boiler. The boiler just got more and more complicated as things went along. First, there was our procurement policy, then it was the equipment being used. So I make a recommendation that we reject the bids and get back together with our engineers and see if we can get someone to come up with something clear and straightforward. One of the points was the hot water for the building and how that was going to be produced. And that got into, I don't know. It was a little bit vague in the written in the contract. So anyway, I would like to make a motion to. Yes, to reject the bid for the firehouse boiler.
Second.
Say, yes, a roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Belofo?
Yes.
Mayor Mirandi?
Yes. Thank you. Keep you updated on that. Correspondent's request for five K road race on three twenty one twenty. For some reason, my system is a packet of old messed up. Yeah, I got it, it was a page before that.
You can say, and yeah. Yes.
Okay. Stuff like your office last week discussed possibility of a five K race on March twenty first in the village of Cold Spring. This is a race to celebrate and raise donations for a world Down Syndrome Society. That's a brief flyer, letter of flyer proposing route for the road race. You mentioned the next village meeting, Janice Twine, I'd love your guidance on how to take the next step.
I'm actually in attendance as well.
Excuse me?
I'm actually in attendance, I requested, I proposed, I'm in attendance.
There he is.
Do you have any questions?
The author. Document.
Well, it goes through Nelsonville, also. Part of the, part of the Pearl Street. So part of your route is in, not in Cold Spring.
Not in Cold Spring?
Part of your route is not in Cold Spring yet.
Just by the top part?
The very top where you go up to Pearl Street.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, so do you have to go through, through Fiddlestown?
Nelsonville.
Nelsonville?
Village of Nelsonville, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I know, I was in the office when you stopped.
I did, I did.
Yes, and you had a guess as to how many people you thought was gonna, were gonna be involved?
I'm assuming like, you know, thirty to forty, forty runners for the event.
And it's just gonna be a run, not a walk, or?
It's just gonna be a run.
Is Larry have to be involved?
Larry probably will. I'd definitely have to coordinate with Larry.
Yeah.
Police officer and officer.
Copy.
No, but I would run by him, I don't know if he has to be involved.
Oh, okay.
I would decide, we have to, I have to talk to the, you know, our officer in charge, make sure.
Okay.
If there's any way to, we can get a better fix on how many people, thirty or forty, I don't think's a problem, but if it's hundreds or something.
Oh, no, I mean, this is, you know, this is the inaugural event, and you know, I'm keeping it intimate, at least for now, and hoping that, you know, it grows, grows in the years to come. But this inaugural run, you know, I'm estimating thirty to forty people.
Where are you gonna advertise it, or how are you gonna get people to run?
I'm just, you know, through word of mouth, you know, throw a few flyers up around. But it's really word of mouth for families and, family and friends in the area. But all are welcome, it's, you know, it's like flyers, flyers up, up Main Street, libraries.
Well, I'll just, let me, can I get back to you?
Absolutely.
I'll talk to Larry, see if there's a problem, and, and you know, if he doesn't, or if it's just gonna be that size. And what time is it, does it say in here? Sorry, I didn't read.
No, no worries, on March, Saturday, March twenty first, beginning nine AM.
Now, if it doesn't snow.
If it doesn't snow.
I see that you're gonna be using Dockside Park.
That, it would, the intention would be to kick off the run, and the run down at the park.
Well, it says it starts at the gazebo, which obviously is the bandstand. And then it ends at Dockside Park. And you have each drink celebrated, so I'm assuming there's gonna be a party.
Following, not, not in, not in the public space, following the event, there'll be, there'll be a celebration. Either at my home or at a local restaurant.
Okay, so it won't be at Dockside?
It will not be at Dockside, it's purely just the, the ending, ending for the five K.
Do you have a rain, snow date?
I don't have a rain, snow date. But could propose it for Sunday, March twenty second.
I think Sunday is where we run into trouble with the shirts going on and people sew. We'd have to, like, I think that was, isn't that the case that I heard?
My thoughts shouldn't be, it starts at nine and ends at ten.
And then, and now it starts at eight thirty, so everybody will be in and parked.
But they'll be coming, when they come out, the entrance will be.
They'll come out.
Running, will be on Fair, Fair Street.
Right.
And, and actually, you're going through the church parking lot?
Going to be through the church parking lot.
Well, if, if I read this correctly, from Morris Avenue, come down to Northern Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
To Garden Street, and then you cut through the church parking lot, between Garden Street and Fair Street. That's private property.
Okay, that's unintentional. I mimicked, I mimicked a map I had from the, the five K Turkey Truck. And so perhaps there was a mistake in the map that I had, but.
I've seen the, I've seen the, so what you wanna do is just continue on Northern Avenue to Fair Street.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I have zero intentions to, you know, to take the race through private property.
So you probably also have to, if you're going in Nelsonville, have to get permission from them and that, just that. Take up Pearl Street, you're going around, that's probably the only street. But I think the other, the Turkey Truck, they have one crossing there too, so there's, they have two crossings. I guess you'd only have one here.
Well, they're on ninety for ways.
It's not clear where they're gonna cross ninety on the way, either at Benedict or.
I see.
Yeah, Benedict or they're gonna come across at Downey's. It's gotta be one of these two places. And then they cross here, I don't know, like that.
Right.
Have you walked, do you, are you familiar with the route?
I've, I've done the, I've done the run before, and I can, I've not, I instinctually did not go through the church parking lot, and instinctually, so.
It's just like, you know, if you cross ninety, you need a guard or somebody there crossing by, somebody.
I don't think the Turkey Truck has guards.
The Turkey Truck hasn't, yeah.
No, no, they do not.
But we have it for some, what else, we've had it for?
We had, we had the guards, well, we have the guards when they do the.
Bike race, no.
The bike.
Bicycle.
That's, that's because.
Bike ride.
The kids.
Right.
Mostly the kids.
Any of those people.
And there will be no children running this, it's an adult race.
Okay, so, here's a mark on map if you want, this is a couple of notes on there, if you can just check out it if you. You can, you know, tell us which street you're gonna cross here on.
Wonderful, I can make some clarifications.
Yeah, and this, this, that was going through the church, so you just come down Northern.
Got it.
Fair, this little section is Nelsonville.
Okay, all right.
And Marie will shoot, you should say gazebo.
Thank you very much. Consider it changed.
Well, thank you.
Is this, is this a fundraiser?
It is a fundraiser.
Oh.
It's a fundraiser, the proceeds will go to a local organization called G D's Playhouse. It's, actually, it's a national organization, but there's a location in Westchester that we've been, community support, supporting diversity, supporting inclusion, and this resources for individuals with Down Syndrome and their families.
What is the entry fee?
Twenty dollars.
Okay, so you can, you can just drop that, drop off her with the details on that.
Absolutely.
Contact Nelsonville.
Awesome.
See if there's anything else we're missing or not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is a request for refund of late fee penalties for taxes. Which is just beautifully written. I guess they have a piece of paper.
Probably on it, yeah.
This is like our.
That's awesome. That's my next door neighbor.
What's that?
Oh, no, they live two houses down.
They were told to.
The Pastonics.
Give us something in writing, so they did.
They're never there, they live in Brooklyn.
You said that.
Yeah, they're getting older too.
Uh, I haven't, does anyone have a problem with this?
No, not at all.
No.
Okay. So make a motion to refund the late fee penalty for, who is this?
Pastonics.
For the Pastonics.
Yep.
Want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, definitely crossing intersection of ninety and three oh one. Uh, is this the woman?
What is this?
Uh, yeah.
Let's see.
As it turns out, the light has recently changed. It used to be when the light, when you hit the button and the light eventually changed, going north or south or east or west. It used to be that the light would turn green and the pedestrian sign would come on. Now, the light stays red for a few seconds, and the pedestrian light goes on. So it's a four-way red for some period of time, and then appropriate lights turn green and theoretically, the pedestrian is mostly across the street by then.
So is this the woman that was at our last meeting?
Yes, yes. But her point is very valid, that the, the northeast and southeast corners at three oh one and ninety, it's difficult to reach the button. And the button is totally non-obvious on the northeast corner. So it would be ideal to have the, the, when the light turns green, sorry, when it is time for the light to turn green, regardless of whether or not somebody pushes the button, for the walk sign to go on, for the light to stay red for another few seconds, and then for the walk sign to go, and then for the light to turn green. That seems to me to be the ideal solution.
What was that again?
You didn't understand my explanation?
No, it's writing down something I'm making.
So what would be ideal is if, when the light is ready to change from red to green.
Right.
If it stay red for another few seconds.
Right.
And the walk sign come, come on.
Right.
Without having to hit the button.
Without hitting the button?
Without having to hit the button.
But that will be on all the time then, no?
Well, what would happen is that the light would stay.
Every red light.
Red for a little bit longer. The pedestrians could begin to cross the, the correct street.
Right.
And then the light would turn green, allowing theoretically, the pedestrians to begin trying to cross the street.
But this would happen in all hours of the day, when there's not that many pedestrians up there usually?
Yes, now, she has suggested, it's not a bad idea, I don't know whether or not the DOT can do that, is that the, that this, what I just described, occur in the morning when children are on their way to school, in the afternoon when children are on their way, are on their way home from school. So what she, what she suggested, from seven AM to nine AM, and from two PM to four PM, that would be ideal if it could do it then. And her point about the buttons on the northeast corner, which is in front of Willie's, you almost have to step into the road to push those buttons to make them, to make this.
Right.
To affect the, the walk signal.
Okay, I'll, I'll draft a letter and send it to the DOT requesting at least, well, request both, but a more accessible pedestrian push button and a delay red.
Yes.
Maybe at those hours.
That'd be great.
I'm sure they won't go for the delay, but we'll ask.
Right.
Old Business, request purchase of village property, two oh seven Maine.
I don't see it, I don't see James.
I don't see James here yet, okay. Okay, we'll table that one. He's gonna come with more information. Uh, request to use Dockside Park by Hops, when last we met, was a no-go because of the number and concerns. So John has done some homework and redone his map. You have the new map? Yeah.
John, could you come and sit at the table there so I? Thank you.
You're welcome.
So my, my concern is, well, I'm still not a go with this, just because of the number of people, the traffic that'll be in and out, in and out of the park. I just, I, it's something I don't think we want. It's like, gonna be at least fifty cars, at least, probably, I would say seventy cars. They're gonna have to come unload or do something, come back out again, and come back in later and leave again. So that's my concern about it. It's just, it's just too much, we have food trucks, we have tents, we got, got everything, I mean, the whole area.
And for two days?
Well, for two, yeah, it'll be set up on either Friday night or Saturday morning, and then that's the only time you'll see those cars. There are, I put fifty-five vendors, if you need me to go down to fifty, which you had requested, well, we're willing to do that.
Well, I think we, I'd say it was a consideration to see what it would look like, but.
Right, but there's a lot of space there. I took them, all the tents off the area that you had requested and put them further back. So the setup time, well, we were gonna propose to the vendors that they could set up either Friday evening, three, four o'clock in the afternoon, or Saturday morning, that's the only time you would see them.
I don't think it's a matter of seeing them, it's a matter of.
Or the vehicles, the vehicles.
It's a matter of the vehicles going in and out, and the access that they're gonna need to their tents and.
Right, so we weren't gonna let them go off the driveway. So we would have them come up along the driveway, and then we'll provide carts to have them unload, like Lynn had suggested. So we'll provide carts for the vendors to take all their stuff over to the tent locations, so there will be no cars driving onto the grass. That's specified in our instructions to the vendors. We'll lay out where the tents will be, based on that map there, which is like four rows, I guess, or five rows of tents. There'll be three or four food trucks, they would be on the gravel, like at the end of the circle. At the end of the circle, and a little bit before the circle, along there. And then one, possibly a little larger tent, forty by sixty, for setting up tables, so people could sit and eat if they'd like. The vendors, talking to several of them, it's really only one person, so it's only one car, that's fifty cars.
There's gonna be, with, there's fifty, fifty-five vendors, right?
Correct, yes.
That's, and that's fifty cars?
Well, fifty-five or fifty, which, if it's fifty vendors, fifty cars, it's only one person per vendor.
You would hope, I'm sure that's always true.
Well, for the craft people, it appears to be that way.
And then there's the food trucks?
Right, and they come in with their own truck, and then that would be just parked there.
That's another, how many vehicles?
None, just the three or four food truck itself.
Yeah.
So they, they would just position themselves, and that's a truck, so there's not a car.
Okay, maybe I should, maybe I should make my definition clear, a vehicle, I guess I should say, that way. Vehicles going, I mean, cars, trucks, dump trucks, taxi, I mean, you know, we need everything. The, the thing is, vehicles coming in there, so.
Okay.
We're sixty, I think.
Okay, we'll maintain them on the road, the gravelled road and stuff, we won't let them go off into the grass area. So that's pretty well maintained, but.
When I was down at your other thing, I was down there, and they were driving right across the infield, and we all agreed that that wouldn't happen, so what's the guarantee they're not gonna drive wherever they want to down here?
We'll put a fence up. I'll put a fence up.
What about, sorry, Dave's talked about vendor parking, what about patron parking?
Well, patron parking will be throughout the town, just like, say, on the Fourth of July, or when we've had an Oktoberfest in the past five years. People would be either parking at the train station, or parking up on Route ninety, or parking on any side streets in the town, down at Mayor's Park outside. They have like the Halloween parade and stuff, people find spots to park. And that gives the people at least an opportunity to be parking in various places in town, so they're walking through town and taking in the village as well. This is a fair, where when the people come to the fair, they're there for an hour or two, Lynn would probably be able to attest to that. You know, people come to a festival, a fair, they're coming looking to buy some things, maybe get a bite to eat, and then they're gone, so they're in there for an hour or two, maybe three, I don't know. And then they're maybe spending some time in the village as well.
So.
From eleven in the morning to six o'clock on Saturday, and then on Sunday, eleven in the morning until five o'clock on Sunday.
Is there an admission fee?
Yeah, there'll be an admission fee of like five dollars or like ten dollars or something.
And you expect a thousand people or so each day?
That's, well, over the course of the day and stuff, you know, I don't know how many people will come at one time. I, I, you know, when it comes to a craft festival, people will come at eleven o'clock, or twelve o'clock, or one o'clock.
So a thousand people, is that a thousand people, that would be entering?
Probably at one time.
Sorry?
At one time, or during the course of?
Is that over a two-day period, or a one-day period?
Oh, one day period.
One day period, so.
Yeah.
It's two thousand people over two days?
Right.
Okay.
I did talk with Steve Marino at Miller and Associates. Tim has given me permission to park, they have about twenty parking spots, he said. So they have twenty parking spots there. If we needed to rent a highway parking location, behind the, in the highway department location, that provides us with forty. I did visit and met at The Nest, and I met with the owner there, Sandy, who's had The Nest there for twenty-plus years. She's given me permission to park up there, which, she has thirty-seven spots. I talked with her on Monday. She doesn't use the property on Saturday and Sunday, so that's another spot. I checked also with the high school, they haven't gotten back to me, but between twenty at the Miller property, and then thirty-seven at The Nest, and then if we needed to maybe rent it from you, the highway department, there's a total of like seventy or eighty spots.
Well, if you have the twenty and the thirty-seven, and you have fifty vendors, you should need our highway department, you should be fine.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Which would be better for, you know, the police cars and everybody else coming in and out, makes it just that one less thing we have to worry about.
Yeah.
If you get held in, then you're.
Yeah, yeah, and they do have, you know, an application, a whole process, a seven-page document. I got it up from the superintendent's office, they're gonna check with the maintenance grounds, people will see if there was anything going on on the calendar, there's not, no fest, no games or sports or anything that day. So that.
John, would it be financially viable if you did this for just one day?
It's a little bit more attractive to vendors. That's, you know, a one-day festival versus two for them, it's talking to a bunch of them, getting a sense of if they'd be interested, simply two days is a nice.
I'm just concerned that it'll be, not for you, but for the village, that it will be a disaster in terms of traffic and, and whatnot throughout the village. And if we go into that and find that to be the case on Saturday, we were faced with having it for two days. And I think it could potentially, if it's, if it's a, a bad situation, we're faced with having our residents having to contend with that for two days instead of just one. This would be the, I think, the first time a large event would, were to be held at Dockside.
Yeah, it would be.
But, you know, I've had, you know, like four years, I, in Oktoberfest, at Mayor's Park for two days, two full days.
Yes.
And, you know, that's the same sort of amount of people coming into town for an Oktoberfest.
But as Larry pointed out, you have two, two, actually, slightly more than two methods of ingress and egress, whereas there.
Right.
You don't.
Right. But I know you were talking about, you know, stopping the traffic and having to go down there, and have them go towards into the train station and back out, so I don't know.
Sorry.
Have you considered using your shuttle bus as a way to, as a way to shuttle guests in and out too? Because it looks like you're gonna have a shuttle bus between parking for your vendors.
Right.
So, you know, before and after the event, but then what does the shuttle bus do all day?
Right.
You could probably put it in.
I could, yes, I could have a shuttle bus.
You know, that way you could get, you could get people to park, you know, in these other places too, and kind of just do a loop. I know.
I can, I had, I had the means which to have a shuttle bus if you guys wanted me to.
I know when they did the Cold Spring Antique Fair at Mayor's Park, they had a shuttle bus picking up people here and taking them.
You know, I know, you know, we've complained, you know, sometimes when Mayor's Park over there, you know, I know traffic gets a little crazy because of the parking on both sides of the street, so it becomes a little bit of a, you know, exercise in safety and stuff as well. So, you know, even though you have two directions, it does get a little crazy down there with the park, with the cars, you know. Here, at least, you don't have all that parking going on, because, well, you could have a police, you could have a police car right there, you know, allowing, you know, maybe just the residents coming down into the, the loop area. You know, and I would think, I think that's what Larry mentioned last time.
If I had reservations at Hudson House, I wouldn't have told to go somewhere else.
Well, I think if they mentioned that, I assumed the police officer would let them go and stuff. Well, I think if they mentioned that, I, I assumed the police officer would let them go and stuff, you know.
I mean, you don't really wanna shut off the bottom part of Main Street for two full days at the end of May.
No, I don't think so.
Right.
Closing it off doesn't, you know.
Right.
As you said, your vendors will be in Friday night or Saturday morning and then they won't be back until Sunday night or Monday morning.
Right.
So then that shouldn't be an issue, I mean, people who come into this festival.
Right.
Shouldn't cause us to close off Lower Main Street.
Right.
It's just, here's what it is.
I wasn't sure what you did, I thought you, that's what you did on Fourth of July, but I wasn't sure.
Well, that's different because we have, because we have the, um, the parade going down, we have things at the bandstand, we have food trucks along, uh, on, you know, across from Woo-Woo's and all that kinda stuff, that's all closed off.
And people tend to be there for the duration, they come for the fireworks, so.
Right, right.
They come in the late afternoon and then there until the fireworks are ended and then there's this, this.
And that's also not two days.
Right.
That's, you know, we close down in the afternoon.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I would like to, I mean, you know, you very clearly said tonight that, you know, we asked you for fifty artisans and yet everything you wrote says fifty-five.
Well, I know Marie mentioned fifty-five, right?
That needs to be sort of, uh, that needs to be, you know, locked in.
I think I said fifteen, it needs to be fifty-five.
That needs to be locked in.
Okay.
I think the biggest consideration and, uh, i- is the, the use of the park and the amount of traffic that's going in and out of the park. The other stuff we do and we deal with kind of on a routine basis, people coming into the village and parking and there's no parking and they find parking. I think, is this what you wanna have down at Dockside and do you want that many cars driving in and out of there? And, you know, I'm sure they'll all be perfect and everyone that I've ever met is always working just, just the way you d- design something. And so they'll just single file go in there, there won't be two cars coming back trying to get by each other on that narrow road and driving over into the grass, that won't happen. You know, the, they're, they're not gonna, they're just gonna come when you tell them to and leave when you want them to, unlike the other fairs that you've had, so I, I just don't think it's the use that we want down there, it's, it's, I think it's a lot of, lot of vehicles going in there and I don't think the park wanted that. They never had that and I don't think, and I definitely don't want that. Whether there's fifty tents or, I mean, maybe if there were ten tents or something, you know, that's different, but that's something that's not gonna be, you know, for you and your finances, that doesn't work, but having a hundred and how many tents?
Fifty-five.
No, we don't have fifty-five now.
What's that?
We're down to fifty-five.
Fifty-five tents and then the ten, forty by sixty tent of stage, food trucks. The people coming in to drop off, all the other things you have to drop off, the dumpsters, the toilets.
It's a lot of wear and tear.
It's all done, it's all done, okay.
It's a lot of.
I'm just, I just brought back my proposed, the layout based on our conversation last week, last two weeks ago, you know, and I, I did what you asked, I reduced from a hundred down to fifty.
But we didn't say come in and, or say yes, do that, or else we would've just said do fifty-five and it's good, I, I was not saying good. And I didn't say reduce it either, I, I think fifty-five is just as much, and when you see the tents laid out there, I mean, I don't know the dimensions of that park offhand. So if you're adding that one tent that I see and then, uh, which is forty feet, that's from the, uh, other side of the road. Then you have at least ten feet between and that's, that's a forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred, a hundred and forty feet or something across, how, how big is the park?
Pretty big, it goes a hundred and twenty feet to a hundred and thirty from the stones to the, um, to the brush along the river. And then from, uh, where the bandstand is, uh, to the all the way back, it's, uh, almost three hundred feet.
From the bandstand?
Uh, for where you would put a stage, you know, where the electric is.
Right, yeah.
All the other, and, um, that's, that's. Yeah, uh, going, uh, yeah, from the music, uh, where the electricity is all the way towards like the train tracks, that's, uh, roughly about three hundred feet. So, um, we can keep the vehicles off, they can stay on the gravelled area, um.
I, I would say, um.
So if I put it in Mayor's Park, you'd, you'd be approving it if I did it at Mayor's Park?
I would.
Yeah. It, it just seems way too big.
I think you'd get a lot less resistance if this was from Mayor's.
It's a controlled area and it's better access and we've been dealing with that.
Well, that, and the other thing that just kinda needles me in the back of my head, if there, if there were an accident, if something happened. You know, with all these people milling around, it's, it's gonna be difficult to get emergency vehicles in there or more difficult to get in and out of there with emergency vehicles than Mayor's Park. That's a little easier access for. I know it.
We would have a, a, you know, staff, they would have Mayor's Park.
Would you, would you consider moving it to Mayor's Park?
You're wel- are you guys willing to go to seventy-five vendors? Because, you know, fifty on that big field and stuff is gonna, gonna look like there's like nothing out there almost.
How many do you, how many did?
Fifty on what?
Fifty vendors on that big field, and Mayor's Park's not gonna look like a, uh, you know, it's gonna look pretty sparse to be honest with you and stuff and.
Well, you last week said that Dockside was bigger than Mayor's Park, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying.
What's that?
Oh, no, you're right.
You said Dockside's bigger than Mayor's Park, but now you're saying, and so if you think it's gonna be sparse down there, then.
But no, Dave, if you're, well, if you knew the dimensions of Dockside, fifty tents at Dockside's, um, going to be, won't be sparse, but it'll, there's still a lot of room at Dockside, let me say that, because if I have like, I think I have six or seven tents in a row. Um, right, on my map, I think there's like six or seven maps, you know, that's, uh, two hundred feet, you know, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of space there. We, we don't need to like argue on one versus.
Well, no, I'm not arguing, I'd like to take a vote now on, on Dockside, if you'd like to move it to, then I would put another application in for, uh, for Mayor's Park. So, uh, uh, all those in favor of, uh, hav- having this, uh, event at Dockside, um, say aye?
I would be in favor, but only one day, I'd like to see what the, uh, capacity and the flow at Dockside would be like for a large, for a large group.
All those against?
Uh, I'm against, but I, I think it's just too big, I think if it was smaller, the more manageable in terms of the impact on the village and the comings and goings of all those people. And there's already quite a few tourists that are gonna be down there on their own anyway. You have to go, the way in is not as easy as getting in and out of Mayor's Park, so I, I think it's, I think it's just too much.
I agree with.
Brad?
No, I, I could say at Mayor's Park, I don't, I don't.
Could you then, because I don't have my application in and time is running out on me, um, we're willing to change to Mayor's Park, but it's a possibility that you could give me the blessing with like the recreation, I guess, if you're doing it or something, um, but could I get the blessing to do it at Mayor's Park so I can at least start contacting artisans and we'll, we'll change at the Ma- Mayor's Park?
And how many vendors will you have there?
Fifty-five.
We just have to confirm with the rec committee that there's nothing on the calendar for those dates.
I wouldn't, I didn't think you'd be putting two, uh, two big events on in town, would you, at the same time?
No, we did last year.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we, you know, we would have to confirm with them, uh, which, you know, if, if it's clear.
Well, still the same parking issues also.
If it's clear on those dates, I'm okay with it at Mayor's Park, the fifty-five, we just have to confirm.
And, and confirm with Larry.
Confirm with Larry, yeah. And, and the same, you know, with, with the vendors, getting them to unload and get them to the same parking places that you're talking about.
Well, we'll probably just do the highway department then, you know. Depending on, you know, maybe we can by June, we can, uh, maybe I can try to do like a, a map layout or something, so that we can do a know that whether there's thirty or fifty spots there to, you know, make sure that the gas tanks are available and there's no parking.
I mean, you, you'd have to take out Tim Miller, but you might still be able to use the Nest.
Yeah, the Nest would work out too.
And even the high school if you wanted to, because they're both more convenient. To Mayor's Park than they are at Dockside, so.
Some refinement of the parking at Highway would have to be done.
Yes.
Because there were problems last time, so. So we definitely have to get together with Larry.
I think we actually.
Come out with a parking plan that has to be stuck to, so.
Yeah, a dock, where, for the vendors?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But maybe I could try to, try to do a, a layout there and, you know. I'm, uh, we're willing to, uh, I'd like to have Artisan Festival, I'd like to have it two days, I think it'd be nice for the community, for, uh, our business to, um, expand beyond just craft beer. And we wanna bring the Hudson Ballet to Cold Spring. So, if we could maybe check in the morning, I could come in the morning and stuff, maybe if we could, if we could possibly check with Jeff to see if there's nothing on the calendar.
Uh, that's easy enough, I dare, you could just stop by and ask him.
You know, and then if, and, uh, we can work with Larry on, you know, the, the traffic flow and things like that, but I, I really desperately need to, um, call people. And artisans.
It will, it will be a problem on Sunday at Mayor's Park because of church. What time is it?
Well, the street's cut.
Eleven, it's a, it's one way on Sunday.
It's one way.
Yeah, it's eleven, I mean, there's a, what, twelve o'clock mass, there's an eight-thirty mass and a twelve o'clock mass.
I don't know, friend, you, you know what the masses are.
Yes, Marie, I do, yeah.
That would provide more parking once church was over though, right, because we could, uh, keep it one way for that reason.
Yeah, and then. So I, I think.
We'll check at the park, church, see if they can make some money on parking there right there.
They don't, they can't give you that because they have a twelve o'clock mass.
No, I mean after, it's like later on.
It's between you and followers.
Yeah.
So yes, check with Jeff tomorrow, see if Mayor's Park is available on those two days.
Okay.
And also work on the layout of the highway garage.
Yeah.
We have to get the okay from, from Larry first. I mean, that's one thing we definitely have to have, so we can say yes now, if Larry says he doesn't wanna deal with it or he can't get men there, then we have to either, we have to find somehow to control traffic or.
Okay, and are you gonna talk tomorrow?
I have to talk to him about the other.
Is Larry in, do you know if Larry's in tomorrow?
I don't know.
Okay.
Good.
So, we're good.
Okay.
But tomorrow or probably Thursday or later, so we'll, we'll get you.
All right, I'll, and I'll, uh, I'll fill in an application and submit it, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, with Jeff as well, okay?
See if I can get that, talk to base of Larry.
All right, sounds good. All right, sorry for causing so much, uh.
That's all right.
Stress.
While we're here.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Approval of bills batch five, four, three, eight?
Yes, before I move to approved batch, fifty-four, thirty-eight, for a total amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval minutes, twelve, eleven, nineteen, uh, trustee workshop will make a motion to approve.
One second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, there is, um, in the second set of bullet points, uh, number one, two, three, the fourth one down, it says the LWRP was accepted in twenty-fourteen by NYSERD, but NYSERD required the village to establish a code update committee to address twenty-nine topics prior to New York State approval. Actually, um, the LWRP was not accepted, it was, um.
Essentially completed by that time.
Right.
And, uh, start, what happened in two thousand fourteen is the Department of State required the village to, um, modify the LWRP to address, um, a number of topics. So, uh, uh, one, pre- previously we spoke, but it should, instead of saying, but NYSERD, it should say, but the DOS, Department of State required the village to, um, to, uh, address.
So can we table this and you can send new, new, uh, new words for that or new, uh, description of that?
Okay, I have one thing.
All right, I have a couple too. Um, one thing, uh, Dave Marzolo is in, uh, the day of the, the hub race, um, they wanted to, uh, use Dockside for, from nine till eleven as a daycare, uh, parents that are running will be down, starting on, uh, West Street and they, they, no cars will be going into the, uh, into the park, except for one, um, that's set up, um, and then, um, I don't know what the date from the hub is.
May seventeen.
What is it?
Sunday, May seventeen.
Sunday, May seventeen? Um, so there would be no impact to the park other than, uh, one, one car going in there, um, they supplied the insurance for, uh, as for our rental agreement.
You're not gonna have any porta potties?
What's that?
You're not gonna have any porta potties in there?
I don't think so, you didn't mention that.
They'll have to.
What's that?
They'll have to, that's, a lot of people that'll be there, so.
I'll, uh, tell him that he should consider that. Uh, does anyone have a, a problem with them using the, uh, the park for that, for three hours, or, yeah, three hours?
I said nine to eleven.
Nine to eleven?
I, I thought that's what you said, nine to eleven.
Yeah, that's what he told me.
Okay, so it's two hours?
Two hours. He's using some fuzzy math. I just said we wouldn't, we'd waive the fee, whatever, we're on that one, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Does he need police?
What's that?
Does he need police for the race?
No. He's, he's, the race and everything, he's coordinated with Larry, for this, he doesn't need anyone. He's got, he's having a, uh, son of a person with skills, uh, coordinating, the, uh, babysitting, yeah, actually. So that's that one, thank you. Um, next was, um, Jen Zwart stopped in, um, and she was advocating for an ad hoc committee to, uh, to deal with cell towers or to proactively try to get something on the books, um, she offered to chair, uh, a committee, um, so thoughts on that? Like, we don't have anything that, right now.
I sent you a note last night, an email last night from John on the same topic.
So Jen's been very active with the Nelsonville, uh, case and, uh, is familiar with loopholes or shortcomings of their, their codes. So I think she'd be, uh, you know, a, a good person to have on it, she's also a person that takes business.
Excuse me, Dave.
Seriously.
The name of this person was Jen?
Jen Zwart.
Oh, thank you.
So, um, is everyone, uh, fine with, uh, and, uh, putting a, an ad hoc committee together for that and having Jen, uh, chair it? She can find one or two people, however many people she'd like to work with, um, and then, and then, and then get back to us with her, you know, when she comes up with whatever, she can work with us, John's gonna be sending some other municipalities' codes or laws and, uh, we'll forward those to her and, uh, and see what they can come up with and then have a review by the board.
That sounds good.
As long as she has time, I mean, she's.
What's that?
As long as she has time, because I don't see her that much at meetings for the tree committee.
She said she's, she's ready to go for it this, I think, so. I mean, if not, no one else is doing it, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm fine with that, she's a good person.
We talked about moratoriums, John said, John, John's description of when you have or the need for a moratorium was a little different than I thought. And I think Jen thought it was more if, uh, if, if things were happening, uh, were already in motion and then you put a moratorium on, just to proactively putting a moratorium on. I would think you would put one on feeling that you don't have anything on the books and you're worried about things that might happen, but John's read on it, so, if that was one thought of, of moratorium.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're okay with that, I'll talk to Jen and, uh, put that together.
That totally.
Totally.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Great, all right. All right, um, last thing I have is our, our, our code review. One, I, I don't know if, uh, I mean, I've figured out a way and that I can put it, um, that I can access all of the documents that Marie sent that are redlined very easily and you can comment on them very easily. If we all, we're on Google and we could all access, access that, I think it would, it would be easy to work with. Um, I don't know if anyone else has tried it or whatever, but I think we need to, to get on one program and, uh, and work up of that. I think we need to, I think we have, uh, two responsibilities, one is to review the changes that CUC made. Then we should be reviewing all of the chapters and, you know, uh, and seeing if there's changes we would like that they did not address, so. The review already is all redlined, so I think we should go through the documents and we should clear up everything that we can that's, that's easy to, which is like punctuations, capitalizations, some grammar, um, changes like from highway superintendent to highway crew chief, uh, there's, there's, they're not of substance, um, they're needed, I, I'd like to clean the document up first and then have the document come to everyone for our review and go through that. Or if there's reviews on the red line that are, are, are serious or ones that we need to take time on, we can not linger on them. We could do that in the second phase, but I think we should clear up everything we can. Marie?
What?
Oh, sorry, sorry, didn't, knocked it back to sleep, okay, so. So the first one would be, uh, to, to, I, I think we, the best way is if we had laptops to come here and, uh, if we all had something to work up of, I don't know. Can you rent them or can we each get one somehow?
Man, I have one, I just need to bring a plug, because my battery doesn't wanna stop on.
I think you have one and I think, uh, Lil, Liz, uh, yeah, Lynn has one and Maria.
Whatever your name is, you don't.
Whatever your name is, you don't want.
Do you have one?
I've got a laptop.
Yeah.
I'm working on it.
Are you?
Yeah, well, you sent me an email about the other day.
Right.
So I'm figuring it out, there's, there's no shortage of busted computers in my house and some of them actually work, so.
Can you, can you borrow from the library? The library rents-
They don't let me in there anymore.
Do they have laptops?
I don't have tools.
That's a joke.
Like-
I saw you looked at me.
Do they have-
No story.
Do they rent la- uh, laptops in the library, do you know?
I have no idea.
I know they rent tools.
They rent camping equipment.
Yes, tools, you know, saws and all that kind of good stuff, so.
So for the first, for the first review or going through the redlines and taking care of the grammatical and technical changes, punctuations, it's, Marie's the owner of the site or has sent it to us, we, uh, I don't think we're in edit mode, um-
I'm sorry, I, I sent you an email, I've looked at, uh, the folder is, everyone can view, edit and comment. I've looked at five of the files and every file that I looked at, people can view, edit and comment. I'm not sure where you're saying that they can't.
I, I thought that's what you had told me.
No, and now what I said-
I'll get the cross out and some nails and you can, you can have at me if you'd like.
Well, one of the things I think is a problem is when you have multiple people editing the document.
I don't, I don't think we should edit, I think we should comment on it, but I think we should edit, okay, let me be clear. See, if we had this together, we wouldn't even be talking here if it was so straightforward, but it isn't, so we're gonna work through this. Now, if you have a, a way we can do that, that's fine, I didn't see that in the meetings that we had, so it seems like we need to clean up stuff like punctuations. Now, I think anyone can edit that if you're fine with that. We have the main document that will be saved, the original document, and somebody with, with the blessing, with your blessing, with whatever, whoever's blessing you want, should be able to go through and change capitals, uh, capitalizations or punctuations, and we should clean the documents up.
So you can just accept, accept the changes, Marie, you, you need to have the whole history, right?
Sorry.
You need to, you need to keep the whole history.
Whole history, yeah.
Which will be saved.
Put in it, so if I, so if I were to go in and say, accept that you changed it from a lowercase to an uppercase C, are you automatically gonna have the original document where you made the changes or, or do I have to do something?
I have been told that Google will keep that.
Here's a crazy thought from a, a really ignorant techno person. If you have a document and you saved it on a file or saved it somewhere else and it's not the one we're working on, you won't be able to change that if you're working through Google, will you?
I'm sorry, do that one again.
Okay, we're working off Google on this, but you have the original document, so you can put those original documents, archive them, put them somewhere that we won't be working on and it won't be affected by what we do.
So save-
Is that right?
Save a Word document.
Original.
Save a Word doc.
I don't know, I don't care what it is, I'm asking, yes, is that possible? Okay, so we can, so what's the problem? We have, we saved the original document. We saved it somewhere, then we work off a set of documents that when we're working on, doesn't change that, so we'll have the history of the original document and then we'll have the history of our changes.
So save a Word document.
So, the problem that I see it is, let's say that there's a, a version of docs on, um, on Microsoft Word and there's a version, this chapter zero 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 five, and there's a version of, a version of, and there's a version of, uh, uh, docs on Google. The Word version can easily be saved, that's not a problem. As you continue to make changes to the Google Docs, that is not reflected in the Word docs.
No, it isn't, but as we discuss it and come to an agreement, then we can go back into the Word document and adjust as you need to.
I'm sorry, that's a, a lot of duplicated work and it's error prone. As lo- as long as you have to replicate from one version of a document to another version of-
Why are we working up another set of documents if we're all working on Google and it's sent from you? Why are we, no, just answer me a question. We're, if we're-
Well, we're saving the history.
First of all, first of all, people do not, my, my feeling is people do not want to work with Google, but don't have another answer. So Google is set up, the Google Docs is, so that you can communicate collaboratively on, 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 on a document, right? Does, does Microsoft have that? Does anyone else have that?
We could, yes, we could set up a folder on the website, on the village website, and put all the docs out there.
Because this is so difficult with Google Docs.
Um, no, you said, is there a different way to do it? And yes, there is a different way to do it.
Okay, so, so-
But it seems like there's this, this total resistance to work with this document to set up for that.
If I believe you, this is driving me nuts.
Sorry, Dave, you're, you're talking to people who do not have experience with Google and do-
I don't either.
And, sorry, you asked me a question, I'm trying to respond. And so we have, do not have a lot of experience with Google and we do have a lot of experience with Word. So obviously we tend to that which we know, which, which says we go, we are much more comfortable and we know how Word is going to work.
And that has worked out so well to this point for, for me and everyone.
Well, it hasn't because we really haven't done, we've been trying to-
Well, we came to a meeting and we were gonna make changes, but nobody had the changes, nobody had the documents, the documents weren't sent, were different documents, and nobody's working off of Microsoft, there anything else?
I'm sorry, that is, that's not true.
Is it? Oh, you were at a different meeting than I was at.
When we came to the last meeting, where we reviewed chapter forty-five-
I don't care, wha- whatever, say chapters, please, let's not get into the weeds. That's how things take so long. We, we reviewed chapters and then what happened?
We reviewed chapters, I made the updates and then you sent out an email and said, stop doing anything. I wanna rethink this and define a new process, so.
But why was that? Because we were at a meeting, looking at documents that have all these markups on them and we were talking about stuff for two hours or so and got abs- got little of anything done.
There was part of it.
When we have five hundred pages to do, so I thought that maybe I would take the bull by the horns a little and we'd see if we could streamline that and make stuff more sensible, because it didn't seem like there was another way for us all to communicate together. So having a document that we could work off and comment on that was clean seemed to be the way. And Google Docs seems to be, you know, they, they, they are out there for us to use it for that purpose, it was created for that purpose. It's not that difficult, it really isn't. It, because I, I, like I said, I'm not been working in Microsoft either and it's just some basic, you know, I think there's a lot of common sense on it.
The, the last meeting we went to, we were looking at incorrect documents because the ones Jeff was able to copy for us were outdated.
Yeah.
And that was-
Jeff provided hard copy, he provided the wrong version of the hard copy.
And that was, that was-
But everything that was out on-
So, so let me, let me just jump in for a second. We take the, we take the document, Marie has the redlined document, we save it as a Word doc, version one, and then we clean it. And we, you know, then we go into Google Docs, we clean it, we make comments, we save that commented version as version two in Microsoft and then-
Why bother? Why bother?
Why bother what?
Saving it in Microsoft.
Because we, because we keep seeming to lose what we do in Google and because you need to have the history.
I, I, I can't say that we see too much-
We don't want, maybe we don't, okay, well, you need to have a history. So we'll, every time we make, so we'll save it in Microsoft as version two, this is the latest changes we've made. And then if we make another discussion, we accept what we want to, we don't accept what we don't want to, we save it as version three and that's the history.
But we'll stay in Google as we're moving ahead?
We'll stay, we'll, yeah, well-
And then save it in Word?
And save it in, well, save, say, for example, I went through, today I went through one thirty-two. I accepted your capitalizations, probably shouldn't have, but I accepted your capitalizations and your format.
In, in Word, I'm sorry, in Google?
Yeah.
Oh, Jesus, oh, so.
But, um, I was assuming we would have another version and I was, uh-
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm stepping back from this, you organize the meeting, you come up a way to do this and I'll sit at the table and review it, because my attempts are, have been futile, they've met resistance, no one knows how to use Google, it's incredibly complicated. And so I think that you should come up with a plan, uh, we, we won't have another meeting until we have one and we'll decide how we're gonna do that, whether, yeah, I mean, just decide how we're gonna review these, how we're gonna look at them, how we're gonna archive them, how we're gonna, you know, you know, save the changes as we go. I, I, I've put a lot of time and effort into it and it seems like it's, uh, it's going nowhere and, uh,
I mean, unfortunately, we all have put a lot of time and effort into it.
Yeah, I know, so, well, let's move ahead, we've got a lot of chapters to do. I'm not gonna sit here, I'll tell you, on a, on a night and go through those redline things and go into the conversations we've had like the last couple, because we will never, ever get done with that and there's a lot of other things that we gotta be dealing with in the village.
So, if you will, the last time we met, we spent the last, probably a half an hour on one point and I can't remember what it was, it was in, was it in?
There was a lot of points that were drug on and on and on, it was painful, it was so painful, my neck hurt, I went home with a headache, that's how painful it was.
But I think-
And no one controlled the meeting.
I think what we need to do is be disciplined at the meetings, i- independent of where the documents are. We need to be disciplined at the meetings. I think we need to establish a timeline for where we, for how long we discuss a particular point. And, and, and just, once we reach the end of that timeline, we put it to one side and we go on to the next topic. I, I think that, that could help. The punctuation and the capitalization, I've asked if you send them to me, I'll get those incorporated. And, and, uh, so I've gotten some of that, but I haven't done anything about it because you, you had asked that we-
Okay, I'm gone, I'm not here, take care of, take control of it. All I know is I wanna see the documents, I wanna see the end result and we're gonna discuss everything that's redlined and whatever time it takes, it takes, because it's, it's the law, it's gonna be the new law of the land, so I'm not gonna rush anything or work on it, so. Whatever, fine, whatever you wanna do. I'll, I'll step back, I am not a person that's been involved or embedded in any one way to go, so, uh, you know, I can still change courses in midstream.
What I, what I, when you and I had talked, I can't remember, I think it was Saturday, I suggested that what I think we need to become comfortable with Google is a tutorial on Google. And I, I think that if, if the feeling from at least one of the members here is that Google is the way to go, I think we need to, I think we need to better understand Google to become confident in it.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, you just stated before that there's a way to do it and you seem to know that and you and Fran are on board with that, so I'll work with whatever you got, I just didn't see anything and I just think it's gonna, so. I'm gonna leave it to you, I really am.
Couldn't, uh, could Anthony provide something like that?
I have no idea what Anthony's skill is.
Anthony's working on, there's a, you might be able to get a, a Microsoft-
Microsoft team or something.
Team or something.
Jeff has asked him not to continue with that.
Yeah, because to start something totally new doesn't make any sense.
There, there's a tool-
Yeah, it would be new, it would be crazy.
There's a tool that, that was developed, an internally developed tool, I told Jeff we are not gonna put our money.
You told Jeff that?
Yes.
And that's a, that's something that you have the authority to tell Jeff?
Yeah, yes.
No, you don't?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you gotta tell Jeff not to move ahead with something or not to do something.
There were two products that Anthony talked about, one was a Microsoft product.
Right.
The other was something that Anthony had developed. I don't think we-
That's good that you don't think that, I'm glad you don't think that, I don't think that it's your place to tell him not to do something. I don't. I don't think Lynn should come in or anyone should come in and just say, no, you're not gonna do that.
It didn't say we weren't gonna do that, I asked Jeff not to continue investigating that tool.
And that doesn't mean that we're not doing that.
That is correct, it doesn't mean that.
What does that mean?
To look up on, to start something Marie knew and nobody knows anything about, maybe, so let's say-
That is correct, it has-
But what if it's set up and you could take a little time and it makes life easier for the remainder of this long haul that we got ahead of us? So we're gonna slog through some way that's antiquated, because we could, we understand how to do that, when there might be something at our fingertips that would cut the time and the effort in half. Again. You got, you come up with something, whatever, we'll meet next week, I'm not doing this, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
James Harper's not coming, so, I texted him.
Yeah, he, he did bring it, he was bringing additional information.
Yeah, he, he did not do it, he forgot.
Oh, it's tabled.
I second the motion.
Well, we have not asked for public comment.
What's that?
We haven't asked for public comment yet.
Public comment, sorry Lynn, I'm a little out of my mind, yeah.
The dates for, uh, John Share's event, are they still May thirty and thirty-one?
May twenty-nine, June first, is that right?
Yeah, thirty and thirty-one, twenty-nine set up in June first, I think. And it's, it's not confirmed until we confirm with the committee, that there's nothing going on.
And the police.
Like Saturday and Sunday?
Yes.
Thirty, thirty-first.
Anything else? I'll make the motion again to adjourn.
Second it.
Second from Fran, all in favor?
Aye, Fran.